At this time, I'll call our meeting to order. We welcome you this evening. I'm glad that you can make it on a rainy, misty night. Pastor Michael McGill was supposed to be responsible for our invocation and for whatever reason, we do not know, he's not here. So I've asked Commissioner Legg if he will lead us. If you all will, please rise.
Father, we thank you for this, another opportunity together with the citizens of our town to do our town business. We pray that you watch over us tonight and let the decisions we make be the ones that are best for our citizens and our town. We thank you for all of our public safety personnel and our town staff and town workers. We thank you for this board, Lord, and we ask you to bless this board and bless the new board that's coming in, that we might have a good working relationship for the betterment of this town. I thank you for this past week. You took me to Kentucky, brought me back safe. I thank you for that. Ask you to watch over each and every one of us as we go on our way toward the Christmas holidays to celebrate your birth. We never fail to give you the praise. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve our agenda. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none, opposed. And do I have a certificate for Duncan Harling? Ms. Adams, while we wait, you want to do your manager's report?
I can certainly do that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, and Board of Commissioners, Rockfish Road Sidewalk Project, we don't have anything new to report at this time. Johnson Street Sidewalk Project, the staff is waiting on CSX and PWC utility reviews. The ADA Transition Program, Stewart Incorporated, the staff is continuing to gather self-assessment data. Survey on Gulfview Greenway Property. Surveyors expected to complete the survey by November the 20th. Fountain Lane Property, we are still waiting on the property to be surveyed. Trade Street Museum, the drawings for the renovations to the interior are at D2B for modifications, and Public Works staff has not received a finished copy as of yet. Fiscal Church, the new heating and air system has been installed and wired, and we're waiting on the final inspection to be completed. Paving Survey, Kircher has all the pertinent GIS and Powellville information, and they are working on correlating that information. Update on the temporary police station building project. Police Chief Charis spoke with Ben Stout last Thursday, November the 14th, and he advised that the finalized building plans have been delivered to the town for final review and stated, once the plans are approved to proceed, that work would start as soon as December 2nd. Back in August of this year, nine people registered for the GED High Step Program through FTCC. Since that time, there have been four students that show up regularly for classes. They meet every Tuesday and Thursday from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the conference room at the Parks and Recreation Building. The recruiter informed Parks and Rec Director Lamarcus Morrison that she is constantly getting inquiries and interest to attend the classes, and another student signed up on November 13th, bringing the total to five students for the next class. There seems to be some discussion concerning the yule log at the lake on Friday, December the 6th. Apparently, some citizens are worried that the town is not planning to have the yule log this year. I have spoken to Parks and Recreation and the Fire Marshal, and we most definitely are planning to have the yule log on Friday evening at the lake. We are trying to make it somewhat bigger than last year, but it cannot be on the grass, and for safety purposes, it has to be closer to the water. We are currently working through those details. All of the department heads were out of the office this past Friday, November the 15th. We were participating in team-building exercises and strategic planning and goals for this next year. Some of the items of discussion were improvements and efficiencies within the departments, ways to make more of a green effort, improvements to public relations, improvements to Citizens Academy, and farmers market. And these are just a few of the items that we touched upon amongst ourselves. We did have a facilitator there. The Holes-Houser Group was there to help us get jump-started on the strategic planning that the board is going to be working on this next year. Heritage Park Master Plan, McAdams has completed the site analysis, inventory, and surveys for the Heritage Park Master Plan. A second public input meeting will be held on December 16th at 5:30 p.m. in this room, the Luther Boardroom, to present their findings and get input on concept designs. Baseball Field Rentals, since updating the fee schedule for ball field rentals in September, the Parks and Recreation Department has constantly received reservations. Currently, USSA has rented the fields for two consecutive weekends for softball tournaments, bringing in revenue in the amount of approximately $1,200. They have requested 10 dates in January 2020. Stormwater, the town recently approved a new stormwater drain cleaning and maintenance contract with T2 Contracting Incorporated. All storm drains and infiltration device on Wallace Drive were cleaned last week. We currently have the rotation set up to clean every other Thursday as needed. Repairs to the Veterans Memorial. Public Works has solicited several quotes for the repairs to the Veterans Memorial. They have received a preliminary quote from one company and are awaiting more detailed information on the pricing. Code Enforcement, during the last week, 41 code violation notices for junk vehicle, public nuisance, weeded lot, and minimum housing standards were given out in the following neighborhoods: Rockfish Woods, Fairway Forest, River Road area, Middle Street area, Woodland Hills, Hill Street area, Black Bridge Road, Village Green, Von Air Place, Eaglewood Forest, Creek Bend, and Golf Acres. And a reminder, the Town of Hope Mills employees will enjoy their annual Thanksgiving luncheon and the third annual service awards this Thursday, November 21st, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Hope Mills Parks and Recreation Center. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I read our proclamation. Whereas Duncan Harling is an Eagle and Summit Scout and child of Michelle and Hugh Harling, and whereas Duncan Harling has built a new sign for American Legion Post 32 which has withstood three hurricanes, and whereas with due diligence and dedication to the ideals and principles of the Boy Scouts of America, Duncan Harling has created a PSA for scout anti-bullying that was seen all over the country more than 3,400 times, and whereas an honor and recognition of such an achievement, special attention should be awarded. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners that Duncan Harling is congratulated for his achievements and leadership and wished well as he continues through life fulfilling the ideals and principles of all Eagle Scouts and the Boy Scouts of America. And is there anyone here representing Duncan Harling? I didn't see anyone, so I'll make sure that he knows that we recognized him this evening. Next, we have public hearings, and the first is case P-19-39, rezoning of 1.12 plus or minus acres from R-6A residential and R-10 residential to CP planned commercial or to a more restrictive zoning district located south of Service Road 1003 Camden Road and west of Service Road 1374 State Street. It's submitted by Philip N. Smith and Doris A. Ross, owners, and Mark Kandler on behalf of Kandler and Associates. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Madam Mayor, before Chancellor gets started, I already discussed it with Dan, but Philip Smith is a good man. He's been a client of mine for 32 years, and I've been his advisor, but there's no direct financial benefit from the decision you all be making tonight.
As long as there's not a direct financial interest, there's no conflict.
Thank you.
As indicated, this is case P-1939, request to rezon from R-6A and R-10 to CP. The requested zoning, rezoning is tied to two properties totaling 1.12 acres in size, one of which is zoned R-10 located at the southwest intersection of Camden Road and State Street. This parcel is vacant and unaddressed, fronting approximately 74 feet along Camden Road. The second parcel is zoned under R-6A district regulations and is located in the rear of the first property, fronting approximately 408 feet along the west side of State Street. This parcel is addressed as 3324 State Street and is developed with an existing mobile home. There is an additional property tied to this request located 3334 State Street but is located outside of the Town of Hope Mills limits. As you can see on this existing zoning, everything highlighted in blue is Town of Hope Mills limits, and you can see the subject properties highlighted in yellow. The area to the median northeast and west of the vacant lot along Camden Road is zoned under R-10 district, under R-10 district with the area to the east, west, and south of 3324 State Street zoned under the R-6A district. Although both parcels are surrounded by residential zoning, there is a large commercial corridor to the east of this area zoned under the CP planned commercial district with the Millstone mixed-use development located to the west as portions of Camden Road are developed with commercial uses. And as reflective of the zoning, the surrounding land uses are single-family residential. There are several manufactured mobile homes located in close proximity to the subject properties. In terms of the area view, the two subject properties located within Town Hope Mills are outlined in yellow. There are no hydroic or hydroic inclusion soils near the subject properties. Water and sewer is available to both, to these subject properties. And these are your site photographs. This is a view of the subject property from Camden Road. This is a west view along Camden Road, subject properties to the left side of the screen. This is a view on Camden directly across the street from the subject property. This is an east view along Camden, subject properties to the right side of the screen. This is a view from State Street at the 3324 State Street property with the mobile home. This is a view of the 3334 State Street property that's located in the county. This is a northern view along State Street, subject properties to the left side of the screen. This is a view directly across the street from the properties on State Street. This is the southern view along State Street, subject properties are to the right. Now, in terms of recent activity, the Cumberland County Joint Planning Board recommended approval of this request at the October 15th meeting. Planning Board recommended denial, however, of the third parcel located outside of Town Hope Limits, but staff has recently been made aware of the fact that the request for the third parcel located in the county has been withdrawn. The county is now telling me that is not true. So that's just useful information. Again, the county did recommend approval of ours and recommend denial. I think December 16th is when the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners will hear that case.
So when it comes to withdrawal, at the planning board meeting, the applicant or the property owner did express that they may withdraw the county piece due to the Planning Board recommending denial. However, we don't officially have that in writing yet, so it's still on schedule until the applicant officially withdraws it.
As it relates to land use policy compliance, the 2030 Growth Vision Plan recommended urban and the Southwest Cumberland Land Use recommendation was for heavy commercial, and there is no current proposal for this development. Staff recommendation is approval, and again, Cumberland County Joint Planable recommendations for approval as well. And the motion for this approval is located in your packets. I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have and for the public hearing.
Anyone have any questions before we have called public hearing?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is there possibly going to be a problem with what Betty spoke about, about withdrawal?
Not from our end. Even if it's not withdrawn, and the county does deny their piece, we fully understand the reason why Cumberland County staff and the planning board did not feel comfortable with the third piece that's located outside the county, outside the town limits, but I would think that that has no bearing on our piece as they did recommend approval of ours.
I'm sorry.
Regardless of whether they withdraw it or if the county denies it, I don't think that would have any bearing on the approval that, or at least the staff recommendation of approval for all the pieces that are located inside the town limits.
Madam Mayor, would you run into that problem down on Cumberland Road behind the new gas station there at one time, and it took about a year to get that corrected? I just wanted to check to make sure there was no potential problem. There's always a potential problem.
Yeah.
Do we see one?
No, not at this time.
Thank you.
We have no jurisdiction over the county piece, correct?
That's correct. That information I just gave is useful information, but we have no jurisdiction over that piece.
Okay. All right, at this time, we'll open public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Is there anyone that would like to speak against this rezoning? Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
So be it.
Okay. So now, do we have anyone that would like to make a motion as far as action?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this project for the land of P-1939.
You actually need to go to the motion that's in your packet and read that motion.
Second page of the staff report.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning of the R-6A residential and R-10 residential to CP planned commercial within the town limits of Hope Mills and find this portion of the request is consistent with the adopted Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan of 2013, which calls for heavy commercial at this location. The CP planned commercial district is classified as heavy commercial and further find that approval of this portion of the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the subject properties generally meet the location criteria for heavy commercial as designated with the land use policy of 2019, excuse me, 2009, and the request is in harmony with existing commercial zoning along the south side of Camden Road.
I have a motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none, opposed. Thank you, sir. Next, we have case P-19-40, Revision and Amendment of the Hope Mills Subdivision Ordinance Amending Article IV Development Improvement in Design Standards, Section 86A-405 Sidewalks and Walkways, subsection A Sidewalks and Walkways Required, and Updating the Table of Contents as Appropriate. And I'll turn this over to Mr. McLaughlin.
This is a simple housecleaning item. We've discussed this at several meetings. At the September 9th board meeting, Board of Commissioners approved language to amend the subdivision ordinance that would not, that would amend the ordinance that would now not require sidewalks for group developments within already-approved subdivisions where initially, that were initially approved without sidewalks. This was also recommended for approval by the Planning Board on October 15th. It's just now coming back to you guys for full adoption of the amendment. And the motion is on the second page, third page of your packet as well.
Okay, so at this time, we'll open public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this change to sidewalk ordinance? Subdivision ordinance? All right. Anyone that would like to speak against this change to subdivision ordinance? Seeing none, motion to close, close a public hearing?
So be it.
Okay, now, action? Does someone have any other discussion, or do we have a motion for action?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I was under the impression, I thought we had the ordinance squared away where we had to have sidewalks in front of any new construction. I wasn't aware that there was, let's call it bugs in the system. I guess that's what we're trying to do. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve this case number P-1940 to revise the, and do an amendment to the Hope Mills subdivision ordinance. Thank you, ma'am. I've got it on the computer screen, but. An additional request or application for the amendment to be comprehensive plan for this request. The following change in conditions was considered in amending the subdivision ordinance to meet the development needs of the community. The requirement of sidewalks is existing residential subdivision initially approved without sidewalks due to a group development creates a sidewalk-to-nowhere situation. And the next amendment approved was reasonable and the, and the public interest because it will alleviate the burden of installing a sidewalk on one property in existing subdivision where no other sidewalk installation is required.
And if you would, read A into the record about the Southwest plan as well.
A?
Yes, sir.
The approval is an amendment to the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan of 2014, and the Board of Commissioners shall not require any additional request or application for amendment to the comprehensive plan for this request.
Perfect.
Okay, we have a motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none, opposed.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next, we have public comments, and the first is Bill Green.
Bill Green, I currently reside at 2540 Campbell June Court, Hope Mills, North Carolina. To the Town Mayor, to all the Commissioners, to the great citizens of this great town. On behalf of the comrades and sisters of Bryce H. Swindell, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 10630, we'd like to put a shout out across the bow to thank everyone that participated in this year's 2019 Veterans Day Ceremony. It was just awesome, and we can build upon this. And we'd like to give a couple other shots out on this. One is to Town Manager Melissa Adams, and also the Town of Hope Mills Police Force and the Town of Hope Mills Fire Department, and also to the Third Special Forces Group, GSB soldiers that helped us out that day with that flag, with the rope that broke. We got that fixed. So yeah, I mean, it was a really great turnout, and I'd also like to put a shout out to Jim Blevins, our comrade, that he ran the operations for the Golden Knights. So it was just, it was just really great. I mean, I really enjoyed it. So that being said, lastly, I'll just say I hope you all have a very special, safe holiday Thanksgiving. You know, be safe out there and just, you know, thank you so much. God bless you all.
Thank you, sir. It was a great day. And Greeley Mitchell? He left? All right, next, we have the consent agenda. If there's anything you'd like moved to new business, we may do so. Consideration of approval of the minutes from the November 4th, 2019 regular meeting. Consideration of approval of travel and training for Fire Marshal Bret Ham to attend the 2020 Fire and Life Safety Education Conference at Great Wolf Lodge in Concord, North Carolina from February 10th, 14th, 2020, costs of $771, and it's currently budgeted. Consideration of approval of budget amendment number six, addition of $2,475 to the general fund for payment of new Parks and Recreation exercise equipment, and acceptance of the October 2019 financial statement. Is there anything you'd like moved to new business, or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
All righty, all those in favor signify.
Miss.
All right. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none, opposed. Old business, none. New business, discussion update regarding the Federal Technical Community College FTCC Building Construction faculty members and Town of Hope Mills officials, including members of the Hope Mills Historic Preservation Commission, inspection of the Episcopal Parish House on Wednesday, November the 6th, 2019, as provided by Commissioner Bell Flowers.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'm just going to read some notes from, from the walkthrough. On November 6th, Wednesday, several FTCC construction department heads attended a walkthrough inspection of the parish house along with town officials Rod McLean and Mason Steele. The main scope of the walkthrough was to see if the project, the parish house, was something the college can accomplish and is beneficial to student learning. The town must supply all the materials as the college would supply the labor. This partnership, much like, goes just much like the police department was built 30 years ago between FTCC students, and the materials were divided. So that was the main scope of the walkthrough, to see if, if it was a viable project for the construction students. The FTCC department chairs assumed the building was empty and Phase 1 stabilization had been completed to prevent further deterioration of the structure and to safeguard potential users of the building. Once both items are complete, the project appears to have significant educational value to student learning. The college does not perform any stabilization functions regarding the building. It's only in restoration. But before the college students can even entertain the project, stabilization would have to be complete, and of course, the building cleaned out. The general consensus is the building can be saved, but it is going to cost a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of effort, starting with at least a new roof and stabilization of several key areas, and two of them that stood out was the chimney wall and then the staircase itself, because both areas are heavily damaged from a lot of, looks like rain that had been seeping through the walls and through the roof. Also, a key question was asked, is the structure on the National Register, and the answer is yes. And I went back through a bunch of notes to find this, and actually, this question was, was answered back in March 8th, 2017 by Chancellor. And I'm going to read the notes. Chancellor McLaughlin presented an overview of the historic overlay district and the historic preservation commission. He presented a map with the current boundaries of the HOD, which is the historic overlay district, and noted that it was established in the mid-'90s. Mr. McLaughlin commented that the HOD is registered on the National Register of Historic Places. The National Register of Historic Places allows owners to receive tax credits for rehabilitation work. In fact, in 1985- In fact, in nineteen eighty-five, the historic Mill Village was established and included in the National Registry of Historic Places. Both the Episcopal Church and the parish house are referenced under item seven, pages nine through ten, number twelve. So, the answer is yes, that it is on the National Registry, and it has been there since nineteen eighty-five. With that said, Mr. Jeff Adolphson, the State Historic Preservation Office Registration Specialist for Cumberland County, conducted a walkthrough inspection of the parish house back on April ninth, two thousand and nineteen. He recommended before moving forward that a structural engineer conduct an assessment of the building. He recommended Lysek and Associates, and their final report was submitted on September sixteenth, twenty nineteen, which we've been referencing, and that report was in hand during the walkthrough back in November sixth. Now, before moving forward, is it, it is recommended that Mr. Adolphson return for a follow-up visit to share the next steps regarding the process of either stabilization and/or registration of the building. Why? Because the building is on the National Registry. So, that is either going to limit registration or stabilization or enhance it. And from what I understand, he was due to come back anyway after the Lysek report was There's some funding opportunities using grants because the building is on the National Registry of Historic Places, for example, Golden Leaf and the Marion Covington Foundation and a number of others. So, going forward, the parish house may not be ready for the spring twenty twenty semester for college students. In fact, I'm pretty sure it's not going to be. Because, I mean, here we are in November, next month is December, and we kick off on campus in January. This project's not going to be ready at all. But it could be ready in fall twenty twenty if the building was completely empty and the stabilization processed by one May twenty twenty. So, if we're looking for a target month or a target date, one May would be it. And I mean, that's just for planning purposes. So, you would have the spring to determine if the stabilization process is going to occur and the funding thereof, and the cleaning out of the building in accordance with Mr. Jeff Adolphson to come back and do a follow-up after the building is empty to see what can be stabilized, what can be restored because it's on the historical record. If the parish house can be saved, it would be a win for FTCC students. It would be a win for our community because many FTCC students live here in Hope Mills. And it would be a win to preserve a ninety-year-old building, one of the oldest buildings in Hope Mills. And Mayor, that's the report. And once anyone has any questions, then I can address from the board or from staff. Those are my notes.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I think the question was originally, is it a historical building? And you've answered that.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Well, I didn't answer. Chancellor did.
Well, Chancellor answered.
Yeah, Chancellor answered it.
He's asked to be recognized. Is that okay, Ms. Adams, if Chancellor's?
This is intended to say that it has never been locally designated.
Correct. It is not local.
The structure, I would say that that is. She said that once you actually have it locally designated, you should report that.
Well, that and a study's got to verify the importance of the building locally, but it is, it is on the National Register since nineteen eighty-five, along with other significant buildings as well. So, that's the answer, is yes.
I think before it can, I mean, my understanding is it's got to be individually done before you can receive any tax credits.
Well, there's no tax credits for a municipality, but you can't get grants.
Well, but I mean, but the district itself, anything we do, if we're going to claim that whole district, then the property owners that are there, that's, my question is, is it just the district or is it the individual buildings? And that's what my answer had been received, was that it was the, the property lines that had been drawn, that this was the district.
The commission's in the process of putting together the inventory of all the historic structures within the Mill Village, so they can certainly include it with the narrative, just like they are doing for every single house in, in the Mill Village.
But as of right now, I do not, this is intended to be. My email that I got, this building order certificate has never been locally designated as a historical.
Well, that's correct. According to the map of nineteen eighty-five, these are the properties that are designated that's on the National Registry. But it also is recommended that the town consider hiring a consultant to conduct an architectural survey update because it's been since nineteen eighty-five. So, it does exist. It is there.
Mayor Warner? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a suggestion, since we don't know the total cost of funding or how much is involved and, and all, and since we have a new board coming on, I think they should be the ones to decide since they're the ones that are going to actually be involved in it, and I just think it should be tabled until.
Well, there's no action. This is just an informational brief, that's all.
Well, I mean.
Okay.
There's no action at all.
Okay.
Not on, not on the board's part.
Okay, so we're not doing anything right now?
No, no action, just an informational update.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for doing that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I might also find out that Lowe's will probably contribute quite a bit of materials for the project. They've been very generous in the past. Our Hope Mills, Lowe's right here in Hope Mills, did you know, Mayor?
The next, we have, of course, the committees and meetings coming up. I would like to let everyone know that we are having a community Thanksgiving service. It will be Hope Mills First Baptist Church on Cameron Road at six PM on November twenty-fourth, and this is involving about ten churches in our community, and we have also Ronnie Holland and Common Ground Band will be there also, but it's just a service that we normally have prior to Thanksgiving, and that's why they do it on Sunday, is hoping they get better attendance. And of course, our town offices will be closed Thursday, November twenty-eighth, and Friday, November twenty-ninth. Are there any other staff comments? Okay, official comments? I'll start with Commissioner Bellflowers.
Just want to like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, I think, and also like to thank everybody who voted in the last election as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Edwards?
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming to the Veterans Memorial. It was beautiful, and I think it was the best one we've ever had, and if you didn't go, you really missed it, but it's going to be great next year, too. And just thank everybody for everything.
Mayor Pro team?
Just reiterate, thanks for coming out tonight. It's been my pleasure to serve you for two terms, and I still got half a meeting left.
And Commissioner Larson?
I'm sorry, I missed the event. I was at my son, he was with my son, he was doing an event for Veterans Day, so I was with him, but I heard wonderful things about it, so you all nailed it.
Commissioner Legg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was out of town, and I missed the celebration of November eleventh. But Mr. Blevins, thank you very much for your input and to help put that off. I understand it was a huge success, and I saw some pictures and some video of it, and it's very heartwarming to see the support that we have for our military in Town of Hope Mills. I will be leaving again Wednesday, so I'll be back for the next meeting. Thank you, ma'am.
I, too, would like to thank our veterans for, our Veterans Affairs Commission, and also our VFW and everyone, because it was a great day in Hope Mills, and it was amazing the number of people that came out, the Golden Knights. Thank you, Mr. Blevins. That was wonderful. And Senator Devier came, and we got to escort them in, and I, I think that's one of the highlights of the day, along with the number of people that were there and the number of veterans, so it was, and the number that came in for the reception. So, I do appreciate everybody that worked hard for that, but it was, and we've had great comments from Angie Brady and Heroes Homecoming about our event, and very excited, so great job. Also want to thank everyone that's come out this evening. We do have our December second meeting. During that meeting will also be the swearing-in of the new board, and following that, there will be a reception over in parks and rec. So, I do hope that you'll come out for that December second meeting. And without further ado, is there any other comments for good of the town? Or if not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.